Town of Acton, Maine, sworn to Robert Anderson, citizen in the town of Acton. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby requested to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town of Acton, qualified to vote town affairs, to assemble at the Acton Elementary School, 700 Milton Mill Road, on April 5th, 2016, at 7:00 o'clock in the evening, to act on the following articles. Article 1, choose a moderator for said meeting.
Jonathan Agarish, now.
Second. Richard Nass has been nominated as second. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, motion to close nominations. Thank you. Second. Is there anyone to vote for moderator?
I, Richard Nass, do swear that I support the competition of the state so long as I shall continue with this, therefore, I will, Richard Nass, do swear that I am faithfully discharged, so that my duties, the duties incumbent upon me, as a moderator of this meeting, put in the competition of law for the state of Maine.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we're going to work on the school budget, and we'll follow the rules unless there's objection that we normally work to the main moderator for manual. This is a very modest set of parliamentary procedures, which we follow. We'll need to refer to the blacksmith, it's there if we need to. I give my address to the pledge allegiance and flag, as we all appear before this stand. Pledge allegiance and flag. To the Republic, of which stands the nation, the republic, and its soul, the liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. This is some information. Everybody, order your vote, everybody should have a red tag. If you don't have one of these, you need to see the perks of the desk on the way in. This is going to be your ticket to vote. There's one item tonight that will be by written ballot, and when you come up to, when you've finished your ballot, and you come up and put it in the mat, you're going to need to bring the red card with you, and that's going to be your ticket to cast your ballot, and that's a rip. When it's a hand write, which will be most of what we do tonight, you just need to hold this up. You should also have a piece of white paper with a yes or no on it, to deal with your one ballot written down in the note, and then to deal with by law. Also, so I don't forget, we may have some folks here who are non-residents, who may have the occasion to speak, unless there's objection, I'd like to just read the names off, and suggest that we will allow those folks to speak. Typically, the rules provide that if non-residents are to speak, we need a two-thirds vote to make that happen. Most likely, in recent years, we haven't had no objection to that, so I'm just going to suggest who those people might be. This is kind of by way of pretty approval. Okay, so, Robert England, who's our superintendent of schools, is here, Mr. England. Trish Bubba, is Trish here? Trish, not here yet. Kim Oliver, is Kim here? Kim, our finance director's in the back. Nicole Hool, is she here? Not here. And Jennifer Ruer, our county clerk, who's here. So, on occasion, they may or may not speak tonight, if there's reason for them to do so, we'll assume without objection that they're approved to do so. Also, later, again, so I don't forget, later on in the process, almost to the end, Article 19. The process tonight is we'll go through and approve or disapprove all of these articles, they all represent the school budget. And then, a week later, you get to come back, and then, on a referendum vote, get to approve the school budget in gentle terms, by one vote, or rejected. There is an article here that's a municipal article, Article 19. So, whatever actually we take on that today, you're not going to see that article again a week from now. Whatever actually we take tonight is going to be it. Okay? So, when you vote a week, if you choose to vote a week from now on the school budget, you will not be voting again on that. Does everybody understand that? Okay, so that's Article 19. That's later on toward the end, what we're going to do tonight, and I'll mention it again, just so everybody is clear on that. Okay, so, we're going to go through the school microscope on Article 2. These are all open articles, so even, the motion can be to go up or down as way you want on these things. If you have comments or questions, you need to come up to the microphone, and express that, so everybody else, including the folks on the television, can see what's happening later on. So, Article 2. To see what's on the Town and Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for regular instruction. School committee recommends to expend $2,473,284 for regular instruction. More finance committee recommend the same, to expend $2,473,284 for regular instruction. Is there a motion on Article 2? Judy.
I make a motion that we expend $2,473,284 for regular instruction on Article 2.
Second.
It's been moved in second in Article 2, to expend the amount the school committee recommends. Is there any questions or comments on Article 2? Seeing none, the motion on Article 2 is to adopt, the motion is recommended by the school committee, which is to expend $2,473,284. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your red cards. Hands down, those opposed. Article 2 is passed as recommended by the school committee. Article 3, to see what's on the Town and Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for special education. School committee recommends to expend $1,481,200 for special education. More finance committee recommends the same. Is there a motion?
Moderator, I recommend that we expend, I make a motion that we expend $1,481,120 for special education.
Second.
It's been moved in second in Article 3, to adopt the school committee's recommendation and expend $1,481,200. Are there questions or comments on Article 3? Seeing none, the motion on Article 3 is to adopt the school committee's recommendation to expend $1,481,120. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article 3 is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article 4, to see what's on the Town and Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for career or technical education. School committee recommends zero. More finance committee recommends the same. Judy.
I recommend we expend $0 for career or technical education. Second.
It's been moved in second in Article 4, to expend $0 as recommended by the school committee. Just as an aside, the reason this is sent here is because the state requires it here in certain articles, I think, and you cover certain bases, even though we don't expend anything where we're required to do the article. There are comments or questions on Article 4? Seeing none, the motion on Article 4 is to adopt the article as recommended by the school committee. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your red cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article 4 is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article 5, to see what's on the Town and Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for other instruction. School committee recommends to expend $45,869 for other instruction. More finance committee recommends the same. Is there a motion, Judy?
I make a motion that we expend $45,869 for other instruction.
Second.
It's been moved in second in Article 5, to expend $45,869. Are there questions or comments on Article 5? Seeing none, the motion on Article 6? Yes.
I think the caller, he's someone who explained that he would love to.
Sure. So, the question is, can someone explain what other instruction means? What is covered in that?
This is co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Extracurricular activities and co-curricular activities include sports programs, and Odyssey of the Mind, and Legos, and those kinds of activities that are done in a science institute.
Other questions or comments on Article 5? Seeing none, the motion on Article 5 is to adopt the article recommended by the school committee to expend $45,869. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article 5 is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article 6, to see what's on the Town and Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for student and staff support. School committee recommends to expend $525,240 for student and staff support. More finance committee recommends the same. Is there a motion, Judy?
I make a motion that we expend $525,240 for student and staff support.
Second.
It's been moved in second in Article 6, to spend $525,240 for student and staff support. Are there questions or comments? Yes, and. Come up here, so that most can hear you.
My name is Williams, I'm a member of the finance and more committee, I just think, again, for television, someone ought to explain why that particular line item, which represents the biggest jump from our previous budget year, has in fact gone up 49 percent, and I think it's a good explanation point, obviously, but I think we ought to explain that to the voters.
This includes our nurse, and also our guidance and social worker that is going to be full-time next year. We have increased our nurse to full-time with the addition for, with the addition of our pre-K, we're finding the need for nursing services is a little more clear, and so we wanted to be sure that we had a nurse in the building during the whole school day for five days a week, so that's increased that. What else could I say? Library media specialist, and the instructional coach, these are all so things. The library media position is a position that we had for a period of time, and then we lost that particular position. We've been filling that in with an ed tech, and this year, we're returning that to what it's supposed to be, which is the library media tech person position. And the other one was the instructional coach, last year, that was in, that's, it looks like an addition went to this, but it's been moved from another area to this one this year. And technology as well, that's another one as well.
Can you explain what an instructional coach is?
An instructional coach is a person that teaches teachers, basically. As you know, we have a lot of transitions in education everywhere, and that includes us right here in Acton, we're moving from more traditional-based education to proficiency-based education. And this change in instructional practices really requires a lot of extra work on part of the teachers, a lot of extra learning on the part of the teachers to go from teaching the, they had to do it traditionally to the place where we're moving into proficiency-based learning, which is also, by the way, mandated by the state, proficiency-based learning. So, instructional coach works with each of the groups of teachers, and if you're not aware, our students are grouped into instructional, into grade cohorts, K through 2, 3 through 5, and 6 through 8. And the instructional coach works with each of those cohorts throughout, where they're having their common time planning, and they also, she's also worked this year on the early release days, there's been a planned curriculum on the early release days for the teachers to, it's directed towards proficiency-based learning, and got to making the changes in those practices. Anything else?
Other questions or comments on Article 6? Seeing none, the motion on Article 6 is to adopt the school committee's recommendation to expend $525,240. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article 6 is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article 7, to see what's on the Town and Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for system administration. School committee recommends to expend $217,444 for system administration. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we expend $217,444 for system administration.
Second.
It's been moved in second in Article 7, to adopt the school committee's recommendation and expend $217,444. Are there questions or comments on Article 7? Seeing none, the motion on Article 7 is to adopt the school committee's recommendation to expend $217,444. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article 17 is passed as recommended by the school committee. Article 8, to see what's on the Town and Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for school administration. School committee recommends to expend $124,042 for school administration. More finance committee recommends the same. Is there a motion?
I recommend that we expend $124,042 for school administration.
Second.
It's been moved in second in Article 8, to adopt the school committee's recommendation to expend $124,042. Are there questions or comments on Article 8? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt, Article 8 is recommended by the school committee, to expend $124,042. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article 8 is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article 9, to see what's on the Town and Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for student transportation. School committee recommends to expend $264,000 for student transportation. More finance committee recommends the same. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we expend $264,000 for student transportation.
Second.
It's been moved in second, to adopt Article 9 is recommended by the school committee, to expend $264,000. Are there questions or comments on Article 9? Seeing none, the motion on Article 9 is to adopt the motion as recommended by the school committee. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article 9 is adopted by the, is adopted as recommended by the school committee to expend $100, excuse me, to expend $264,000. Article 10, to see what's on the Town and Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for facilities maintenance. School committee recommends to expend $435,720 for school facilities maintenance. More finance committee recommends the same. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we expend $435,720 for facilities maintenance.
Second.
It's been moved in second in Article 10, to adopt the school committee's recommendation to expend $435,720. Are there questions or comments on Article 10? Seeing none, the motion on Article 10 is to adopt the article as recommended by the school committee. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Hands down, those opposed. Article 10 is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article 11, to see what's on the Town and Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for debt service and other commitments. School committee recommends to expend $0 for debt service. Judy.
I recommend that we expend, I make a motion that we expend $0 for debt service.
Second.
The move in second to adopt Article 11 is recommended by the school committee, which is to expend $0 for debt service. Are there questions or comments on Article 1? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on Article 1, to adopt the school committee's recommendation, please raise your card. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article 11 is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Article 12, to see what's on the Town and Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for all other expenditures, including nutrition. School committee recommends to expend $129,487 for all other expenditures, including nutrition. More finance committee recommends the same. Judy.
I make a motion that we expend $129,487 for all other expenditures, including nutrition.
Second.
It's been moved in second in Article 12, to adopt the school committee's recommendation, which is to expend $129,487. Are there questions or comments on Article 12? Seeing none, the motion on Article 12 is to adopt the school committee's recommendation. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. Article 12 is adopted as recommended by the school committee. Okay, Articles 13 and 14 are a little less straightforward, they're essentially consolidated questions, just try to get at the whole school budget, and you might take on this, other people may have different viewpoints. Article 13, to see what's on the municipality will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. The amount currently is $3,451,644.72. To see what's on the municipality will raise as a municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act in accordance with the Maine Divides Statute, Title 28, Section School committee recommends to appropriate $3,451,644.72 for the total cost of funding public education for pre-kindergarten to grade 12, to raise $3,261,854.49 as a municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education for pre-kindergarten to grade 12. So, the total combined state and local contribution, $3,451,644.72, less the state subsidy of $189,790.23, is the amount required by the state from the town, $8,261,854.49. More finance committee recommends the same numbers. The only difference here, there's a 5-in-1 vote, which is noted here, and the explanation is not part of the article, so I'm not going to read it unless somebody wants me to. Judy.
I make a motion that we appropriate $3,451,644.72 for the total cost of public funding education for pre-kindergarten to grade 12, and to raise $3,261,854.49 as a municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education for pre-kindergarten to grade 12.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second in Article 13, to adopt the school committee's recommendation. Are there questions or comments on Article 13? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt the school committee's recommendation. There are two big numbers here, to appropriate $3,451,644.72, and to raise $3,261,854.49. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Thank you, hands down, those opposed. These numbers are nothing, just kind of floating around, I make some, my apologies about messing up. So, the motion passes on Article 13. We have just adopted the school committee's recommendation of raising and appropriating the amounts we talked about. Article 14, this is the article that requires a written ballot, so when we get done going through the reading, and deciding whether anybody's got any questions about this, we're now going to ask you to fill out the white ballot that you've gotten, by either checking yes or no. And a reminder, when we find you've gone through that, and you bring it up here, you're going to need to come up with your red card, otherwise you're not going to be able to put your ballot in the box. Okay, here we go, on Article 14. See what's on the municipality will raise and appropriate in additional local funds. The recommended amount is $1,571,561.28. This exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation model by, and the recommended amount is $1,496,217.75, as required to fund the budget recommended by the school committee. And then, there's a calculation that goes down here that essentially arrives at that number. I'm not going to read that unless somebody wants me to. Okay, the school committee's recommendation on this article is to raise and appropriate $1,571,561.28 for additional local funds, and it gives the following reasons for exceeding the state's essential programs and services allocation model by $1,496,317.75. And again, I'm not going to read the remainder unless somebody wants me to. So, we need a motion, Judy, on this.
I recommend that we raise and appropriate $1,571,561.28 for additional local funds, and give the following reasons for exceeding the state's essential programs and services allocation model by $1,496,317.75. And I will read the little explanation here, because I think it's good for people to know that the essential programs and services allocation model does not fully support the cost of a pre-K to 12 program. It doesn't include things like a pre-K program, it doesn't include things like transportation for high school, nutrition, and other educational and support programs that we have in the Acton, so it comes all those.
Is there a second on it?
Second.
It's been moved in second in Article 14, to adopt the school committee's recommendation. I should say, the more finance committee has a similar recommendation, with a note of a 5-in-1 vote. Are there questions or comments on this art? Okay, seeing none, what we're going to do is ask you to check yes or no here. Line up with your red card, deposit your tickets. Everybody cast the written ballot, that's on Article 14. Okay, I guess we'll close that, and we'll do the counting. Okay, while they're counting, we'll be on to the, I think we'll be able to, now, we gotta know the school article here, so let's wait until we get the count, because I thought we were done. So, let me, while we're waiting, I have an announcement, let's do this part, and then we'll take some questions. There's, I think there's at least one question here about the articles you're going to see if you go to vote a week from today, on Tuesday. Question 1 and question 2, there's some recommendations from the school committee, and there may be some questions about, there's a little bit of a change. about, there's a little bit of a change there. So first, the announcement. The folks who are working on the Romack Orchard Conservation Proposal, which will be on the town meeting, vote June, or having a public hearing on April 26 at the Town Hall on that proposal. They encourage you to come. Is that a fair statement, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I cover that for you? Article 14, the results are, it's written down on Article 33, yes, four, no. So let's move on to Article 15. This is entitled "The Summarize of the Proposed School Budget." Article 15, see what some of the Town Act will authorize the School Committee to expend for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017, the School Department's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12 as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. Non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under Maine Drive Statues Title 28, Section 15690. Unexpendant balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of schools. School Committee recommends to expend $5,263,206 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, ending June 30, 2017, and the School Department's contribution to the total cost of funding public education for grades pre-kindergarten to grade 12. The More Finance Committee's recommendation is the same with that application as was done in a five to one vote. Judy, do you have a motion?
Yes, I make the motion that we spend $5,263,206 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, ending June 30, 2017, and the School Department's contribution to the total cost of funding public education for grades pre-k to 12.
It's been moved and seconded on Article 15 to adopt the School Committee's recommendation. Are there questions or comments?
Could I just say something about this?
Sure.
If you have your budget book, if you would look on the fifth page of the budget book where it gives the budget summary, in that section, you can see the number you just wrote up to go on. And if you look down below that, where it says for the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget, you'll see that the school has already promised to return to the town $170,000 to help offset taxes. And also, because we have to do our budget so early in the year because of the referendum process that we have to go through, because we have to do it so early in the year, we don't know when we do our budget, just what we are going to have left at the end of the year. But the School Committee will be recommending, at the June meeting, the June Town Meeting, will be recommending that we return another, at least another $100,000 to bring the total sum of our budget down, so the percentage increase will be very slight.
Other comments or questions on Article 15? Seeing none, the motion on Article 15 is to adopt the School Committee's recommendation, which is actually expend $5,263,206. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your red cards. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 15 is adopted as recommended by the School Committee. Articles 16 through 18 are under the title "Authorized Expenditures of Grants and Other Receipts." Okay, we're still talking about the school here. Article 16, the School Committee authorized to expend such other sums as may be received from federal or state grants, or programs or other sources during the fiscal year for school purposes. Providing such grants or programs or other sources do not require the expenditure of other funds not previously appropriated. School Committee recommends to authorize the expenditure of grants and other funds as per Article 16. More Finance Committee agrees, and the vote on that was six to zero. Judy, do you have a recommendation?
I make the motion that we authorize expenditure of grants and other funds as per Article 16.
It's been moved and seconded on Article 16 to adopt the School Committee's recommendation. Are there questions or comments on Article 16? Seeing none, the motion on Article 16 is to adopt the School Committee's recommendation to authorize the expenditure of grants and other funds as mentioned in Article 16. All those in favor of the article, please raise your cards. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 16 is passed as recommended by the School Committee. Article 17, to see if the Town Act will appropriate the receipts of certain federal or state grants and carry any previous balances for the following special revenue accounts: Title 1A Oakland Titlement, smaller old school; Title 2A preschool proficiency-based learning. School Committee recommends to appropriate receipt of federal or state grants and funds as per Article 17. More Finance Committee agrees and also recommends the same. Is there a motion on Article 17, Judy?
I make the motion that we appropriate the receipt of federal or state grant funds as per Article 17.
It's been moved and seconded on Article 17 to adopt the School Committee's recommendation, which is to appropriate receipt of federal or state grant funds as mentioned in Article 17. Are there questions or comments on Article 17? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 17 is adopted as recommended by the School Committee. Article 18, see the Town Act will vote to appropriate the following revenue balances carrying the fund transfers to fund the food service budget in addition to amounts raised by taxation for food services in the school operating budget. The school nutrition revenue is $70,000. School Committee recommends to appropriate revenues to fund the nutrition budget as per Article 18. More Finance Committee agrees and makes the same recommendation. Is there a motion, Judy?
I make the motion that we appropriate revenues to fund the nutrition budget as per Article 18.
It's been moved and seconded on Article 18 to adopt the School Committee's recommendation. Are there questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, the motion on Article 18 is to adopt the School Committee's recommendation. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 18 is adopted as recommended by the School Committee. Okay, we mentioned before, Article 19 is a municipal article. We're just going to handle that in a normal way. Just again, a reminder, if you choose to vote a week from today on Tuesday, you will not see, this will not be part of that activity. You are not going, this is going, whatever we decide to do here, it's going to be, for this upcoming article, it's not going to be considered again as part of the school budget. Okay. Article 19, see the Town vote to allow the expenditures of up to $25,000 from the Undesignated Fund for Security Renovations through the Town Clerk/Tax Collector's Office and the creation of a municipal lobby at the acting Town Hall. More selectmen recommend approve the articles written. More Finance Committee recommends approval of the articles written. Is there a motion? Ted?
I make the motion to approve the articles written.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Article 19 as written. Are there questions or comments on Article 19? Seeing none, the motion on Article 19 is to adopt the article as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. If you hands down, those opposed. Article 19 is adopted as written. Judy, I think, if you're okay with you, there may be some questions about your recommendation in the school report on question two.
Yes.
Do you want to entertain those if there's still?
Sure.
Tom, do you want to ask your question? It appears to be a slightly different recommendation than we've seen in previous years. Is that true?
No, this is, the School Committee has always recommended that we bypass this referendum vote stuff. It was put into place at the time the consolidation law went into effect, and it's required to come up on the ballots every three years to vote again if we want to follow our traditional town meeting way of passing the budget, or if we want to do it the way we're doing it now, to follow it this way, and then have to follow with a referendum vote that comes out later. The School Committee has always recommended that we not follow it up with a referendum vote for several reasons. One reason being that we have to do our budget very early on in the season, so that if, for any reason, the budget doesn't pass, which has happened to us a couple of times since this went into law, then we have to do the budget over again, and we have to have another referendum, which we could tie in with the June one. If we didn't have the second step, we could go back to the same way that we used to do, have the school and the annual town meeting, all in one town meeting in June, and just vote on the budget there, without the referendum vote afterwards. That would normally save the towns some money on the cost of an extra referendum, but mostly because the people that are actually voting on the budget, like you people right here tonight, you're here to find out what's in the budget, what questions do you have by the answer here tonight, and the referendum vote doesn't reflect that at all necessarily. But if we all were at the same town meeting for the municipal vote and for the school vote, then people that were there would understand what's actually in the school budget and what's going on with it. We just, it would be a much clearer process and much less cumbersome.
How would you like us to vote on questions?
We would like you to vote no on question two. Vote no on question two will get rid of that extra step of the referendum vote and allow us to go back to the way town meetings used to be, where we just voted on the town budget at the same time, and more people hopefully will be able to understand what's going on within the school budget and what's happening at the school.
Tom, is that your understanding of that? That wasn't quite your question.
Oh, no, it makes sense. I'm just curious if you folks had talked this over with the board selection, that Gutten did any something else.
My reflection of this is that the new part, Judy, was the part of combining the town and the school meeting like we used to do. I recall that you did make that recommendation, and you've always been opposed to the second question as was set up by the state. And I'm not quite clear that, in fact, that you're correct on this, that by combining the two, you then might somehow get away from this referendum. I don't think that's the case, but again, I'd have to suggest.
If we don't have the referendum, if we vote out the referendum, we don't necessarily have to combine the two. We could still do our own school budget if we wanted to, but it would allow us the opportunity to combine our budget with the municipal budget.
Combining them does not get rid of the referendum. What you're asking people to do is to vote against the referendum, that gets rid of the referendum. It does not, combining with the town meeting does not in itself get rid of the referendum.
No.
Okay.
Combine, getting rid of the referendum is number two. It allows us, it allows us the opportunity to go back and have it together, but if question two doesn't pass, if that, if people don't vote no on question two, then next year we will continue to follow the process that we follow in my mind.
Okay, now, just one more small point. If you, if people decide to not vote against question two, and the town decides to combine the two, the town and the school meeting, you can still do a referendum on the school part.
Yeah, but I don't think the school would probably try to do that.
Okay, I'm just telling you, there's nothing in here about voting against. You're trying to get people to vote against question two, I understand that, but the fact that you're combining the two, town meeting and school budget.
No, if people don't vote no on question two, we'll still have the referendum, and the School Committee will still feel obligated to do their budget early in the year because we have to go through that process. If we waited until June and did our school budget with the municipal budget in June, and then did the referendum, then it would take its way into the summer trying to get another budget in place. So the reason, the reason that we have to do our budget as early as we're doing it now is because of that referendum vote.
And there's always the alternative of going back to the old way, which is the traditional town meeting, which is earlier.
In March.
Yes.
For both, for both reasons.
Yeah, that's also an option, right?
Works for me.
Okay, just to make sure everybody's got all the options later. Tom, do you have an initial question?
I guess I would see that at some point in time, that there would have to be another consideration to vote two, to combine the annual town meeting with the municipal vote of the school. I mean, who's going to make that decision?
It would just be the way it always used to be, the way it was following into the back.
Does that necessarily, does that necessarily occur if we vote no against the referendum question? Is it given that you folks would be able to go back to it? I think that would have to be considered.
Yeah, doesn't that, this is separate.
Oh, I understand, but I'm just questioning.
I hear what you're saying, and I, you're asking if we have to do something special to combine our budgets again? Because that's what town meeting halls was, and the only reason it was changed to this point is because of that law, and it's because of the fact that if the referendum doesn't pass, then we have to go back and do the budget over again. But if we didn't, if the referendum vote had never gone, if the consolidation vote hadn't been passed in the first place, we could still be doing our budget with the municipality the way we always do.
No, no, Judy, you're mixing this up badly. I understand you guys want to know where that's to, but that is not correct. The separation of the town, school, and town happened years before. You're mixing the, you're mixing the two up.
Since consolidation laws happened.
You have the referendum, but you don't have a split school and town meeting, and that can happen years ago.
It's not happening years ago.
Well, it was before.
I'm fine since consolidation laws happened, maybe.
Okay, I think we're getting way out, way out of line here. Tom, do you?
Well, I guess I would ask somebody if the goal is to combine the town, school budget meeting, or whatever you call it, with the annual town meeting, kind of thing, that does not happen on that.
Yeah, all right. Tom, let me see if I can clarify this on a neutral, best I can. So the boards that you see before you are board selection boards. They essentially set the dates and the times, and they put the articles on there, okay? It is true that at one point, the school and town were on one particular ward when they only had one step to vote by open, show of hands, open town meeting. You took care of your municipal, and you took care of your school budget at the same time. Four or five years ago, maybe six or seven years ago, the school, no, the school, the first time the school budget failed, they chose to move it back so they had a budget in place before July 1. Tom, to answer your question, the board of selectmen have not decided if they're going to consolidate this. Judy is right that they would have that right. The selectmen could consolidate it now if they so chose, and insisted the School Committee go on in June, but they don't do that. An effort to work together, they do them separately. It's a selectman warrant, so as far as what's going to happen down the road, regardless of whether question two passes or not passes, that's a conversation that the selectmen at that time would have. But the school is, they do the right thing by having it early just in case there's an issue, because they want to have a budget in place by July 1. That was the original reason it was split, right? But it's a selectman's decision down the road, even when that time comes.
All right. Want to keep going? Yes, Mr. Williams.
I just want to make sure I understand that what we do this evening is not to blindly say so as far as all these, all these voices act right.
The only thing we're trying to get our hearts on is what you're going to do next Tuesday. School Committee's right, they want recognition. And then, so our discussion is revolving around what does that mean? If you vote no on Tuesday on question two, the implication that I'm trying to do is that somehow there's going to be a consolidation of school and town budgets and clerketing, but that's not necessarily the case.
Also, it's not next Tuesday if you want to continue the two-step process on municipal budget.
of school and town budgets, and clerkages, and that's not necessarily the case.
All the time, it's going to say, if you want to continue the two-step process on municipal budget, do you want to continue that open town meeting by just showing hands, or do you want to force it to be rectified by a secret ballot in the act? That's all you're deciding as to. There are options, while you consolidate, you know, both counts, but that's not a deciding factor, that's something the selectmen will decide.
I'm going to straighten this. This is school board, also, which is the right. And in a case of, I understand why they were sensitive, and I'm not so sure that it's in the city of the school board to have it all put back in. I guess the selectmen.
I, I think the real impetus behind this voting no, from my perspective, from the board's perspective, is that we have such a small attendance at our town meetings that really know what's going on in the budgets. And people feel like they don't really need to come to the town meeting to find out what's in the budget and what's happening at the school, because they can just go to the polls next Tuesday and vote on the school budget, yes or no. And for us, I think, to have a town meeting without that follow-up referendum, whether we combine with the town, or whether we do it on our own, would still be to our advantage to have the public be a lot more aware of what's in the budget, what the budget's about, what the different accounts are, and what's happening at the school and education in the town. So I think that's really the impetus behind us. It isn't necessarily just to get rid of the referendum, but it's to get more people to come to town meeting.
I want to comment to that, because we only had a couple hundred people at the last valid election, we had to vote, it was a very small turnout even for that.
But this, I think we're getting outside of everything, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just a second. Just to clarify, we've been talking about voting on question one and question two. Question two is about the referendum. Question one, we would ask you to please vote yes, which is to approve the school budget. It was approved tonight to confirm that. And question two is the only part we can discuss, even whether it should still under referendum. Please, please vote one, vote one, question, vote yes on question one.
I want to adjourn, Judy.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, thank you. This meeting won't actually officially end until polls are closed on Tuesday or Wednesday, so the motion is to recess.
And a motion that we recess this town meeting until eight o'clock in the morning on.
If I, maybe five in the evening, after the vote.
Eight o'clock, it recombines at eight o'clock, correct? In the morning.
Yeah, okay.
If we convene till eight o'clock in the morning.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to recess, please raise your cards. Make sure you get your red cards back.